All is ordered. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our October 10, 2012 regular board meeting. Please stand with me for questioning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the condemnation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go call them in court.
Farquhar.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Fraser. Hough.
Here.
Stockton. Pope.
President. What we're going to take on first is we're going to open to the public the public hearing for aggregation. So any ready from the public that wants to come forward? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll have a motion, open that. Salute. Second. Go call please.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Hough.
Yes. Okay, it's now open. Ready from the public that wants to speak about it? What are you doing, killing me up here?
Just wanted to, as part of the public hearing, this is on the plan of governance and operation for the electrical aggregation program for the village of Moni. It is an opt-in program. And from the Will County Governmental League, we have here to explain the plan of governance and the operation, Mike Clemens from the Will County Governmental League. And Mike, if you'd step forward and walk us through this, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah, that'd be great.
The plan of operation and governance for the opt-in program is very similar to what the village discussed back in earlier this year. The referendum in March did not pass in Moni. That was for an opt-out program where residents would have been automatically enrolled in the program unless they chose to opt out of it. This program is structured differently. Residents will receive a letter informing them of the new supplier and rate, and they will have to proactively opt into the program during the specified time window. The way the program works is very similar. Moni is working with several other communities in Will County who also have passed the referendum to try to find the best pricing. The way residents will be contacted through this program is strictly through the mail. They'll come with the village logo. You won't be contacted door-to-door or by phone during this program. The village and the governmental league don't make any money on this program. There's nothing being rolled into the rate on either end. This is strictly to save residents' money on the supply portion of their bill. The preliminary pricing that we were quoted was around forty percent savings on the supply side. That's going to change up or down a little bit once we get final pricing back based on actual usage data. And that's being worked on as we speak. With that, if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'm assuming that the village buildings are going to opt into this, or can they?
The village is considered a larger use customer.
Okay.
The threshold for this program is residential, and it doesn't matter the usage on residential and small commercial, up to fifteen thousand kilowatt hours a year.
And the other question, thank you. The other question I had was, more people who opt into this, would that be greater the savings?
The rate will be a fixed rate, and it won't adjust up or down post that.
So one or a thousand will have the same rate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other trustee?
Just one mark. We did answer this at how they reported here, what the people do, someone out there. A lot of people confused with saying, how could this be done? Edison must be taking a big hit on this. Could you explain why?
Yeah. ComEd does not make any money on the supply portion of your bill. It's strictly a pass-through by law. They're not allowed to make any money on the supply portion of the bill. So you're still a ComEd customer. Your bill will still come from ComEd. They will still deliver the power. They own the poles and the wires and the delivery mechanism. So if the power goes out, you call ComEd. You're still a ComEd customer. There is no preference for customers getting their supply from a different source. ComEd actually doesn't supply your power now. Its direct energy was a little better through the state's program. So ComEd does not make or lose any money in this deal under aggregation program. They're held harmless.
Anybody from the public? Please come to the podium, give your name.
Jackie Herlen, two five six two oh Shoal Creek. Is this a fixed rate for a certain period of time, or will this wait? Because we had gotten information through the mail that it was going to be a fixed rate for a year, and then after that year, it would fluctuate each month as to what the percentage would be. Can you please address that?
This program will be a fixed rate. The initial term that communities are looking at is a two-year program. After that time, the group will go to market again, and it will be another fixed rate. We won't have a unknown fluctuating rate during this program. We've also included in the program a price matching clause. So because ComEd's default rate changes every year at the end of May, if that rate were to fall below the group's rate at any time, the new supplier would have to match that price. And if they couldn't, then they would return you to ComEd's service without a fee. There wouldn't be a fee to return you. So you would never pay more than the prevailing ComEd rate under this program.
Anybody else?
Kansas City, four nine twenty-four La Quinta. We seem to be centered on cost. What about service? If my vice quahog, I call ComEd. I know that they're there. What do you do under the plan where we're with a different company? Who do you call? What do you do?
You still call ComEd under this program. Your bill will still come from ComEd. They are still responsible for delivering the power regardless of who supplies it. The only difference you'll see is the supply line item on your bill will have a different supplier's name and a different rate. But otherwise, you still call ComEd if there's a power outage. They'll direct you to the new supplier if it's a supply issue, but the reality is that really doesn't happen. You'll be calling with ComEd because most residents and customers have delivery issues, lines down, power outages.
Real quick, just to correct you, I'll go up here. So is this basically what you're describing to the gentleman that just came up there? It's on par with like when Ameritech used to have, like MCI would be listed as a long-distance carrier. Ameritech was still the carrier, responsible for the lines and all that kind of stuff. It was just, you're just getting your service for that part of it from somebody else, but they're still responsible for the wires and the ground or all that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
Let's start over.
We've got to wait till we recommend it.
Russ Herlen, two fifty-six twenty-eight Shoal Creek. Is there a deadline to get into this program, or are we have to wait for the village to announce it?
Yes, there will be a time window to get into this program. Once the plan of governance is adopted tonight, there's five communities going through this process for the opt-in program. And when we have final pricing and updated customer list from ComEd, then all the residents and small businesses that are eligible and haven't already selected their own supplier will receive a letter in the mail. And that'll have an eight-hundred number and a website for you to opt into the program. And there'll be a deadline on that letter that tells you when you have to opt in by.
That will come before Christmas?
Yes. Hopefully in the next few weeks.
Mike, I would like to clarify that if currently a resident or small business is using a supplier other than ComEd, they will not show up on the list to receive a letter in the mail. But it does not prohibit them from opting into this program if they can get out of their current carrier's contract and opt into this one during that same timeframe. And the way that they would know that would be that we would advertise it here at the village on the website, on the marquee out front, and, you know, make that as public as we could. But they would have that same opportunity to opt in if they so choose. Is that correct?
Yeah, anybody that falls into the category, any residential customer within the village limits and any small business under that fifteen thousand kilowatt hour threshold is eligible to enroll in the program. But if you've already chosen a third-party supplier on your own, you'd be scrubbed out of that customer list from ComEd to initially receive the letter because you've already made a choice. But you would have the opportunity during that same enrollment period to opt into this program. You just need to be careful with terminating your current contract. Some of them have an early termination fee and it may negate any of the savings difference you'll see with this program. The other thing I should mention is that this program does not have an early termination fee during the life of the two-year contract. Residents are free to opt out at any time without a fee.
Okay. And like every part of this aggregation process here that we're speaking of this evening, it is totally in the end user's control whether or not they choose to opt in and use it, or stay with ComEd, or go up with a different supplier. It's all end user controlled.
Absolutely. Even if the referendum were passed, no one can force you to change your supplier. That's set by state statute. You have the opportunity to stay with what you have or choose another supplier on your own who works on this program. Thank you.
All right. One more question for you. So if somebody's moving into town?
Moving into town after that opt-out or after that enrollment period, they'll have to wait until the next enrollment period at the end of the...
First year, second year.
That's correct, at the end of that initial contract.
And there'd be a new notification going out to all those?
Yes, there would. Everybody would receive a letter again.
So annually or upon contract renewal, there'd be a letter notifying people if they weren't currently, they could?
That's correct. Unfortunately for an opt-in program, state statute only allows us that initial enrollment period. For the opt-out program, customers can join during the length of the contract of the opt-in structure.
Thank you.
According to this ordinance, your move-ins, as you're saying, is only for new construction. If they have an existing electric meter, they have the opportunity to include it.
Yes. That's the way the plan is structured, and we're waiting on a master agreement from a new supplier to confirm. They have to agree to that, those terms, but that's what we've requested. Being a group this size, we haven't had any pushback on those terms.
Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Any kind of motion to close? The public here? Salute. Second. Go call please.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Fraser. Yes. Hough.
Yes. Counselor? You want to go on this, or?
Okay, we have a five-foot.
Let's begin with the court. Okay. This brings us to open to the public, agenda items only. Could you do the comments in a minute? If you come to the podium and give us any address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Jesse Reyes, three seven thirty-one Irish Lane. I wrote a comment on the unobtained terms report, line up a true pool to proceed with purchase of real estate. I haven't heard anything in meetings I've attended, although I haven't attended a lot or a finance committee meeting or other other committee meeting. But I would assume seeing it's public property, maybe because it's from the town meeting, public property committee meeting. But I would like to hear a little information on where the property's at, if the property, the cost of the property was included in our village budget, and why is the property being purchased? How is it going to benefit the town?
Mr. Wallace, you're speaking of service?
You can talk about that when it comes up, or?
Oh, okay. Really good. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. The record is open to the public. Any kind of motion for the subject to send the agenda as is? Moving to the consent agenda as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Go call please.
Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Fraser. Yes. Hough.
Yes.
Stockton.
Yes.
Farquhar.
Yes. Road some carries. Any other information from the courts office?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have two things.
Yes.
First is early voting begins here at the village hall, October twenty-second, Monday through November first, from nine to four thirty P.M. here at the village hall. Anybody interested in early voting, those are the dates and times. And then, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for partnering with Walgreens to offer the flu and pneumonia shot vaccine that will be here at the village hall next Thursday, which is October sixteenth, from three to six. There is zero dollar copay with anyone on Medicare, and most insurance are accepted. So you can come here next Thursday, three to six, to get your flu and pneumonia. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody write that down. It's a chance to get your flu shot and not have to pay for it, which is great. Brings us to the medical affairs report. Mr. Wallace?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. First of all, item F1 is a request on an inter-fund transfer. There was an accounting error that moved monies from the wrong accounts, and we need to have board action to correct that because the actual transaction took place with the bank before we could correct it. Had we caught it soon enough, the wire transfer would not have taken place, and we wouldn't be here. And so at that point, I'm asking the board for a motion to transfer three hundred twenty-eight thousand from tip number four into tip number three.
Second. So Wallace, I'd like to ask one thing. I believe, you know, the answer, there was significant, there was enough funds to cover that, that...
Absolutely, Mayor. There was enough funds, and the only reason that we need to do this with board action is the size of the transaction during our audit will be flagged, and they will want to track that expenditure and the fund transfer back to board action. So it's just really keeping everything above board, no pun intended, but sorry about that.
All right. Go call.
Horn.
Yes.
Fraser. Yes. Hough. Stockton.
Yes.
Farquhar.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on my item, they're not listed in there, but I just wanted to make note that I had a meeting this morning with our Commonwealth Edison community liaison, Scott Bertrand, and it was an annual report from ComEd. And the one thing that I'd like to just point out here is that the service interruption for the year was actually at a level of about the average or any one citizen or home experienced a point three-nine, less than half of an outage per home for the entire year. And the reason we get down to, you know, half of an outage or point three-nine of an outage is just simply through the mathematics, they take the number of homes and divide that all in there. So what this is telling us is that 2011 was a good year. This is a 2011 report. 2012, we're all going to expect some different numbers there due to the weather and the type of outages that were had during 2012. But they report to us annually, and that was certainly worth mentioning. Next on my agenda is, if you recall the reason our board meeting was canceled last month, our clerk and deputy clerk attended a conference, and I just would like to report that there is a return on that, that Clerk Tobo was awarded a thousand-dollar IIMC scholarship award, and that it was in the form of a check and deposited back into our treasury. So that was a good thing for us. There is some payback there, and we appreciate that. Additionally, we have, under the fiscal year 2013 Illinois Jobs Now capital bill program for municipalities, we received an additional eighteen thousand one hundred sixty-five-dollar check for motor fuel tax. This, I believe, is the third of that type of reimbursement. So that's always welcome for road work. Also, I would just like to report on a short note, Trustee Farquhar had asked about our status on our grass cart for our retention ponds, and I will say that Superintendent Grzel went fishing on Saturday and managed to capture twenty-five of those and distribute those to our local pond. So that will help us in maintaining those ponds, and believe it or not, they do serve a purpose, and we're happy to start that program. And last but not least, I would like to bring out some important information regarding our branch collection and leaf collection for wrapping up the year here. Final branch collection of the year will take place the week of October twenty-second. It is highly suggested that you get your branches out on Monday the twenty-second. The reason we kept it open for the whole week is not so that you could put branches out on Friday, but rather that Public Works had time to pick it up. Many times we get interrupted with a service call, whether it be a main break or things of that nature, and so we can't really name a specific date to get it out there. But Monday is October twenty-second, and if you have all your branches out, then we'll be by that week to clean it up one final time for the year. And coupling onto that, leaf collection will begin on November first and will end on November twenty-first, which is the day before Thanksgiving. So please rake the leaves out to the Parkway for Uncurved Streets, and if you are on a curved street, rake it out to the curb, but please keep it behind the curb so that we don't block the gutters in case of a rain or anything of that nature. Work diligently, and we'll do our best to pick them up the entire month of November up through November twenty-first. And the one last thing that I would like to say, actually two last things, is that after Thanksgiving, you do have the opportunity to still place out your yard waste in yard waste containers or yard waste bags for the collection service, but that does end on November thirtieth, which happens to be a Friday this year, and that is our collection day. So you'll have one last time to take that out. And last but not least is with the leaves and the branches, when you get to the leaves, please do not mix leaves and branches as that wreaks havoc on our leaf collection system. It causes some repairs depending on the size of the branches, but it just causes downtime for us, so we appreciate your cooperation in that. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to add a little something there. When you rake the leaves out front, make sure that there's no metal, wire, bottles, because it tears the machine up and is dangerous to the guys that are doing the sucking of it. It had to happen in the past where there's been metal in the pile. That's one of my concerns. The other thing of my concerns is we don't know if we're going to be able to have leaf pickup next year. It's getting pretty much cost prohibitive to try and find a place to be with the leaves. We're going to look at that study and see if it's affordable. It's pretty rough to pick up the leaves and then have to haul them thirty miles and pay you by the pound to dump them, but we'll look into that. That's all I have to add, Mr. Wallace. Turn it over now to the engineers report. Do you have anything?
Under the engineers' report, the drainage project along, over by the police department, has been concluded, and there is a little bit of work yet to be done. The main drainage portion has been concluded. There is some dress-up work, and the final work will be done onsite at the police department. And I would like to say that the water main installation that Trustee Fraser has pushed forward early in the year has now finally come to a completion, and we are happy for that. And that concludes the engineers' report.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Attorney, your turn.
Thank you, Honor. I've got three items for the board's consideration. The first item is an ordinance approving special use permit request submitted by Mr. Patterson, I believe, from the audience tonight, for two five eight three six Sunset Drive. Mr. Patterson and his representatives came before the zoning board, about a month ago, I believe, and it was recommended for approval. I know he is here, obviously, if there's any question from the board, but it's up for the board's review and consideration.
Okay. Let me have a witness number, please. Okay. Mr. Patterson, would you write up number four, podium, sir? And I'm certain that trustees have quite a few questions for you.
Neil Patterson, two ninety-eight Ford Alafia Trail of Villa Florida. This is Mr. Atmar Olson, who has a financial background and is with Olson Properties, to explain any of the real estate or financial problems with this. And Mr. Louis Nusa, who's an electrical contractor, who's been our property manager for the last two years. Louis will be putting up in his parking lot the security in the light of, sort of, the plan today for it.
Any trustees got any questions?
Yes. I have actually two questions. I went through the packet and understand what you're looking to do as far as, you know, paving the back and putting a fence around that area. What if any things that you've been doing to the front of the building to bring that up to code? Once you are, I'm assuming, aware that if you do any...
That's all I have.
...buplication to the property, then you need to bring it all up to code. So what are your plans for the front?
At the present time, we're going to try to get this parking lot in to try to make truck parking easier in the village, to make the truck stops more efficient. We've talked to both of them and to try to eliminate some of the excess parking in town, but I have not, this is the first I've heard about some new things for the front. We're going to try to pave, have two roads going in that are, two roads going in, one-way traffic, and go into the back.
Right, and you listed it.
That will give us a cash flow. That, if I could have a little bit of time on that, we could maybe make some improvements. What improvements do you want, would you like?
Well, it needs to be brought up to code as far as paving, and that's the first thing I noticed. You know, we do have an ordinance as far as paving, requiring the front, and right now it's only gravel up front. I went past there, and there's only gravel. That would need to be paved, I know for certain, as far as some of the other codes that, you know, I'm sure that there's others, but that's the main one I'm aware of, is the paving. My other question is about water runoff. With taking away that much land, have you considered anything with engineering as far as water runoff?
Yeah, this is about half of the area back there, but we met with the engineer this afternoon, and we have a preliminary boundary survey's done now. We turned them in to Mr. Wallace today, and we talked preliminarily about the water runoff, probably retention ponds, and we'll bring it up to full code with the state. We have done that. I wasn't aware that we would have to, that's a big project to start paving the whole area there in a building that doesn't bring that kind of income right now. If we can get the project approved, the money will be there to improve. I have every intention of improving things in the future, but right now, that's probably going to be cost prohibitive.
Okay. So my other question, though, according to your drawing, you have a gravel parking, a gravel drive going in and a gravel drive going out. That would not need our current code.
Okay. Those could be paved. But the lot in front, what I'd like to do is make three swaths in front, but I'll have to get some cash together to do that. This is a hundred thousand dollar project. It's an individual project. I don't have a company behind me on this. I would try to make the improvements there to, for the village and for the property.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Please, on Trustee Cranger's comments there, how long do you think it would take you to secure the cash flow necessary to actually finalize the front? to secure the cash flow necessary to actually finalize the front?
I don't think the front would be a great deal. What I'd do is reduce the size of that lot a great deal in front. I'd make it three lanes in front of the building and plant the rest in grass. I don't need the lot that big anymore. So probably six months a year at the most. And some kind of contingency plan would help us with that. I don't think, my plans would be to connect the parking lot and the building in front with possibly three lanes. Enough to back a small truck into and stay on the pavement. The rest I'd tear out as the gravel and make grass. We don't need a parking lot anymore. That was built years ago for a lot of heavy truck traffic in front of the building. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The Ottmar Olson 1671 Ashland Trail of Villa Florida. The, there's two businesses we're talking about right now. There's a five-acre site and there's a 9,600 square foot multi-bay warehouse. What Dr. is talking about adding is the business that's described in your package that you see there. The building that's in place is in fact a multi-bay warehouse. The business that he's talking about starting is behind the building. Hidden by the building, if nothing, that's going to occur there. The doctor's tenants in the multi-bay warehouse are individual tenants. They're not 18-wheelers. They're not. The largest use would be what I would call a work service unit of the entity. So at this point, we're not talking about lining up vehicles. At one point up there was a bakery that was in the facility and they did have a number of vehicles. That's not Dr. Patterson's tenant. That's not who he's going to have in the building. So his description to you of maybe one or two or three rows of vehicles, that's the max. So what you're going to see from the road is you're going to see a lot of grass. You're going to see a strip right in front of the building for the vehicle to be parked. And then you're going to see a drive up one side. The 18-wheelers will be in the back and it will be fenced and then there'll be a drive coming out here on the side. So it's going to basically change the image of the tenants that are there in the building right now. Be just service vehicles.
The vast majority of the time, there's no vehicles in front. The people come in in the morning, they load their trucks, they leave, they come back at night, then load their trucks, they go home. So it's very seldom that we have vehicles. There was a time where it was a disaster out there with that bakery. And I worked with the village and everybody else in the state of Illinois to get them out of there and clean that up. We make tremendous gains in cleaning that building up now. We've moved the garbage area. We've tried to make it, it's much more presentable now than it's ever been. We were out there today and it actually looks pretty good. But if you give me a little bit of time on that, we will pave the roads. We can afford to pave the roads out and put all of the new project in paving. And then I think the next step would be probably to put those two or three lanes in front. That shouldn't be too difficult to do. If I could have a little leniency on that, I'd appreciate it.
Plessi stock.
Number one, you're probably going to be doubling the amount of traffic that's going up and down Sunset to gain access to your property. Do you plan on doing anything pertaining to that with wear and conserve over, I don't know if it's going to be load designized, if they're going to be empty designized, pertaining to, I mean, that road's in everywhere, so I mean, if it would bring in more truck traffic over it, what are your thoughts on doing anything to work on that?
I'm not a truck stop. What we want to do is do monthly leases. Most of the trucks that come in there would come home Thursday night loaded, would pull in there, would park and then go out one day. There'll be minimal traffic in there. We're talking five, 10 trucks, five trucks to get started a month will give me the cash flow I need to improve the building. We're not going to have a lot with, you know, 30 trucks in there. This isn't heavy duty. I don't think the usage would be minimal, I think on Sunset Drive, to tell you the truth, because these guys are going to be gone most of the time. We really don't want drivers in there on a nightly basis. We want people to come in and need a place to park when they're in town. We try to simplify that as much. I don't want to get into a nightly, this isn't a nightly rental. We want monthly, we want people that are going to be there, that are going to take care of it and will be there on a continuing basis.
Okay, my second question is with the 10 or 15 trucks you're going to have there, parking on weekends and stuff like that pertaining to the Will County stormwater. You say you're going to have detention areas for water runoff and stuff like that. Vehicles leak fuel fluids, oils, fuel, hopefully not in cargo. But are you doing anything with your detention area to preserve the ground that the waste water is going to be running on?
We will put an asphalt pad underneath the tractor fuel tanks and under the rector units on the fuel tanks. That's generally where your contamination is going to come from. We'll have about a 40-foot pad there so the worst driver can park the fuel on the pad. It's pretty similar to what the truck stops do. The truck stops don't have anything specific for fuel runoff either, I don't think. When they park on that blacktop, they wait till it rains. If we have a spill, we'll go out there and soak it up the best we can with it. But, you know, I thought about a drain in the middle where you have the raining water to deal with too. How do you separate the fuel from the water? I'm not quite, you put a rim around it and then the water is stuck on the pad. So I've never been anywhere, I drove at some eyes for seven years across country. I've never seen anywhere that specifically, usually it's just a blacktop lot till the fuel can't dissipate into the ground. We intend to have the EPA out and anything that we need to, I think, a look before we start. And we'll try to do all of the recommendations. But I'll do, we'll do everything we can to build it reasonably with asphalt, is to try to contain the fuel there. I don't know what else, what else is available to do that. You can't...
I mean, as long as you're contacting EPA, I mean. If you're doing runoff into a rest detention land, you know, I mean, as I say, God forbid if something happens, you know, on a Friday when they pull in and they come in Monday morning and, you know, you've got a fuel tank leak or something where you've got 50 gallons going across there, I mean, I just look for...
With all due respect, that can happen on city streets.
I know it can.
Or at the parking lot, or at the truck stops, or fuel stations anywhere going down the interstate. We'll do everything we can to prevent, I don't want the ground to be contaminated any more than the council does. But I think we have to look into it and see. We'll do everything we can to contain it.
Thank you. Pardon me. Just one thing. There's going to be a lender involved. So the lender is going to hold us to task, that in fact there's no environmental contamination to the site.
All right, thank you.
Question. A question. What is your, Dr. Patterson, what is your new business here?
New business is going to be parking some eyes to try to take the congestion out of the, I went over and talked to both the truck stop owners. I think there's 700, 600 trucks in there, in and out. The guys come in now, they park the trucks Thursday night. Their wives or girlfriends pick them up or vice versa nowadays. You have a lot of women drivers too. And they leave the trucks there for three days. And I went over to the truck stops and I said, "How would you like a place to send them across the street? Get them out of your way. I don't want the fuel, I don't want the repairs, I don't want the food business, I don't want to clean trucks. I want to put them in the gate and they're gone in 10 minutes. I don't want people sleeping there. I don't want people staying there." That gets into drugs and other things that you can use your imagination. I slept in truck stops for seven years and on, in rest areas. I know the activities that go on. I don't want people staying back there. We'll have security cameras, we'll have security lights, and we have loop cameras that we can go back and if anything happens, or vandalism or anything, we can go back and look and take care of it. They'll be on monthly basis, they'll be terminated if they don't follow the rules. I have an attorney that's going to drop the contract with that. We've tried to get attorneys, CPAs, we've tried to get financial, we've tried to get contractors, everything involved. And this isn't my work. This is four or five of us trying to put this together. Trying to do everything. I want a good relationship with the village on this. I'm trying to solve problems, believe it or not, in the village as well as to maybe make the extra money to improve the property. That's my goal. I don't need the zoning physician in Florida. I'm trying to overall improve a lot of things with this project.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. You know, in fact, with regards to the paving, the extra paving that trustee was talking about here, I would be willing to give you even like a year and a half to do that. But I think we need to get that lighting, you know, maybe, I don't know how you write that into the contract or the ordinance or how you do that.
For the paving?
For the paving, yeah.
What we probably could do is either have a side agreement or your permit would be subject to a certain timeframe for the paving, you know, and that is appropriate with Mr. Wallace and the board. And so there'd be a side agreement that if the paving wasn't done in a timely fashion, the permit would be subject to eradication. As an individual, it's a little bit, I have to keep my costs down. I'm not a rich man. I'm a family practice doctor, not a neurosurgeon.
Mister. I have one question. You and I've had this conversation. My concern is an 80,000 pound truck. Normal asphalt's not going to carry that, even though that's going to break up quickly. If you just have gravel on it, unless you've got a good base, it can handle 80,000 pounds. Because obviously you're going to go in there, you're going to have to turn around, you're going to have to park, you're going to have to go to use the tool screws to park, it's going to really repave it on your asphalt. I think your engineers are going to be able to accomplish that, it's going to cost to bring out the weight barriers. And I hope you can do that. That's just my main concern, because otherwise you're going to have a temporary and then you're going to go all over again. And that's what you, you know.
What we intend to do is to take the eight or 10 inches of topsoil out, go down to the concrete ground being placed by Swak Trail and put about 150, 200 tons of stone, probably eight inches deep. Put four inches of binder, asphalt on top of it as recommended by paving companies, three inches of coarse asphalt on top of that. So I'll have a base that's about 11 or 12 inches. And that's probably the same base that the petrol truck stop has. No, we don't want to make ruts. We're going in there with weight. And I don't want to have to do that. I want to do it right the first time and take those at 80,000 pounds off your city streets.
I concur. Anybody else? Mister Wallace, any questions?
I have something.
One thing on me, I'm sorry. I've designed this like the rest area and it never lets somebody back up. We had that discussion today. The best way to avoid problems backing up is to go back and look. So I've designed this, we come in one corner, we go out to kidding corner, opposite. They come in and pull across like a rest area. They're slanted, they go in forward, they pull through their slot, they pull up to the electrical outlet, and then they go up front and they go out the opposite gate. There is no backing up. I don't want going through the back fences. You start letting these guys back up, you start getting into trouble. I've seen too many accidents.
A couple of questions. I was here for a meeting. We had an issue before with our company about noise and some of the residents. I understand where you guys located and that really by residents. You're saying you're looking to come in, say Thursday through Sunday nights?
No, probably seven days a week, but I don't think, in warm weather, they don't leave the bus or trucks around.
Okay, that's going to be another question.
Because I have nobody sleeping in there needing an air conditioner. And in the wintertime, Mr. Nusa is going to put in, we're going to put posts by like the petrol has with electrical outlets, you plug in your block heater and keep the trucks warm so they start when you go back Sunday when it's zero degrees.
So these trucks will be sitting in your lots all the weekend, not running?
That's right.
Okay.
You might have an occasional resurp, running.
Right, okay.
And you can't do much about that.
And at the present time, you're looking at five to 10 trucks based on your property spot right now. And you just kind of answered one of my questions about coming in or is that where you're not going to be doing the turn in and turnout? And as far as going in there, there's not, is there going to be any, there's a gate, a security guard to check in, they check in and they're in, there's not going to be any loudspeaker? Anything to that sort?
An idea that's been brought up is electronic gate. They pay for it, you get the access, they go in, they get in their personal vehicle, they come out. Nobody's going to be in there. You're going to have security, you're going to have lighting in there. I think this can alleviate a lot of problems.
You have a code that you punch in at the end of the month. You don't pay your rent. It's a two-day, two-day leeway. You punch your code out. And then they can call one of us or they can let us, somebody can let them out. We can do it electronically. We can open up that gate for 15 minutes, they get your truck out and they can pay your bill.
And in your opinion, you're alleviating the petrol, the truck stops that we have now, the old before?
I've talked to both. They were thrilled. They called me the truck stop angel.
Okay.
Because they had so much trouble with people parking in there and leaving. And they punched them all.
Since our meeting, I've actually been watching the day-to-day article, pass it all time and just seeing what they have coming in and coming out. I have my opinion on what we're going with this tonight, but...
I won't solve the world's problems, but I'll get 15 or 20 and give them a chance. Five, I break even at one, because the building pays the rent, so, and the mortgage. So we break even at one, but to get our costs back and things, five, 10, and we can expand, we have room there for expansion. So this could potentially get those trucks on the other side of 57 in the industrial area. Remember, Mr. Cockle is next door with all the heavy equipment. We have Mench behind all these work, we have the equipment behind it, Dutch Valley Landscaping. So there's only nobody back there to bother. And we get the trucks out of the congestion areas of the village.
Mister Cock, you look like you have something to say. Kidding me?
Real quick, I'm keeping some...
Yes, sir.
Your surveillance cameras are going to be there. And I assume that you will want the police to have access to their control or at least see what's going on in the back block just in case there's something you want to revoke?
I ask the police every time I'm up here to patrol it. It's lonely out there at night. It's dark out there right now. Now with the security lights up out there, now with the loop cameras, you've got to be kind of crazy to pull something when you're on camera.
I understand. I guess what I'm asking is, is there's, because of the current technology, you can really see for, run through the web interfaces and all that kind of stuff. The police department had access to just remotely view, not to control the cameras or whatever. If they had a question about something, they could just look, not inside your building and all that kind of stuff, just to have access to the four or five cameras they may have on that.
That would be, that would be across clerk out with the chief and the city administrator.
Yeah, I'm just saying, is that...
Louis, could that be done? Absolutely, it can be done. It's a matter of going onto the website, typing it up, and somebody who has a computer can pull it up and see what each camera is doing at any time.
I was just thinking of...
And I would also suggest that our chief would have an access code in case they do see some activity in there, you know, they won't defend it again, you know what I'm saying?
No, I'm just...
I think, clarify trustee Gray's comment about the noise. I think the truck idling isn't that much noise. I think the concern is because there are some docks behind you, dropping loads, skid plate noise, sudden shock type of noise. And we just did a sound study over there. It depends. I mean, we're within compliance. We might stay there because we're not, we have to take action. So that would be my concern. Would there be any time that somebody's going to try to drop their load and take the tractor home?
It might. I'm thinking of incorporating a concrete pad that they can put their, you can't drop the tractor, the landing gear on asphalt, even eight inches. If you've got a heavy load, there's a possibility to punch through it, and I'd pay the bills on that. We're thinking about putting a 40, 50, 60-foot pad about six feet wide in there also to drop the trailers on if they want to take their tractor, go back to truck stop or come back to motel.
See, that's one of the problems that kind of worries me is over-road drivers, they do what they do and they go. And most of our problem out west of you were over-road drivers. They can't get their doggy legs up, they drag them a little bit, they beat them with hammers. That's the kind of noise that we, trustee Gray, was concerned with. So we have to work around that.
I don't know who it would bother out there at night. I'm a long way away from anybody.
It travels out there, believe me.
And you've got the truck stop across the other, on the interstate where the trucks going down the interstate, and then you've got 150 trucks sitting at the petrol station making noise.
I agree with you.
I can't believe that anybody...
But there are residents out there that do hear the noise and you want to protect them the best you can.
We certainly don't want noise out there either. I want the trucks to be turned off and we'll try to prevent anything. That's why I want local people. With the kind of clientele we're talking about, local gravel people possibly, somebody that's gone three, four days a weekend, comes in with a loaded truck and has to go get into Chicago Monday morning to deliver. That's why I want people long-term, people that we can trust, people that will pay their rent. I don't want every town they can hear you over the rail driver, because I know the tricks they do. I've sat there and watched them, and I don't want that. I don't want the mess to clean up and I don't want the social issues thrown in. I want this nice and clean, and if they don't, off they go.
This is not inexpensive.
I'm sorry?
This is not inexpensive for these people to leave these trucks. And so the kind of money that the doctor would have to charge for the rent for these vehicles, type of credit that they would have to leave, and the policy that you're out of here very quickly takes care of something like that.
So that's it. I'm trying to get a picture of this because I know trucking my own self also. And like you just said, the driver may have to have a delivery tomorrow morning. Is he going to try to sleep in that cabin when he goes? Is he going to go to the hotel? so you're going to try to sleep in that cabin when you look, and is he going to go to the hotel? Because next morning, he's got to get it in there.
We have a security camera, and we kept somebody doing that, we'll be contacting him, and out you go.
So when you buy laws, you'll be pretty strict, we'll get a copy of the bylaws.
Most people staying there at night, you'd be hoping to, Bernie Goen over in Frank and Earl, and maybe we'll be right, easy journey. What I have is, I have a long job with them Friday. We'll be drawing this up with real counsel, and try to make everything as fair as you can. No, he wants to sit in the truck and go somewhere else.
Right. I think what you're really trying to serve is local people that are over the road, they come home to see their family, the wife picks them up at the gate, their stuff is secured there, and after nine o'clock's run, they can go again, they're out of there. Am I correct?
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. You can add a motion to accept that ordinance, so. Second. I know we've had discussions, I won't even ask it. Roll call, please.
Cranzler? Yes. Scott?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify, I know you, we've talked about it, but I want to clarify, so is there going to be about a year or something like that potential for that?
Well, I don't think, I don't think there's a timeframe solid at this time.
I, I can speak to that a little bit, as the attorney alluded to earlier, once this goes through the normal review process and a site plan's developed and everything with their engineer and our engineers reviewing it, then the area that is in question, that is left over, that they have agreed to, the size that they need, that would be a time to come back for this board, and now we have a specific area, and they can ask for a specific timeframe in which to allow them to gather up some cash. They'll have a better handle on the cost of that.
But there will be an expectation that the, within a short amount of time, you know, a few months or whatever after then.
This is just a long and special discussion, and we'll, we'll put all it together.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, I presented a contract to the board that you can purchase real estate . Fifty-two forty, that's Court Street, within the village. The purchase price is twenty-five thousand dollars. It, it would be for a public purpose, if the seller accepted this. It is also, from what I can understand, below fair market value. It is a contract up to the board to view in consideration.
It's a broad motion.
Thank you.
You discuss it?
There's a request for the session.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to answer the questions that came up from Mr. Reyes at the podium earlier. This, this property is located in adjacent proximity to current property owned by the village. It fits with the long range plan of squaring off our, our park property that is owned currently by the municipality, and it is budgeted money in our current budget. And additionally, the, the discussion was had in a previous board meeting to go out and, and make an offer on this property. Now you have the contractor for you to approve, for approval. I believe, Mr. Reyes, I hopefully answered your questions.
Roll call, please.
Scott?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item is the ordinance adopting the plan of governance for electrical irrigation, which we discussed tonight. What this ordinance does is, it adopts a plan, how we're supposed to, this program, so it's up for the board to view in consideration for tonight.
Order sixteen, twenty. entertain that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Stockton, you can go. That brings us to finance and Trustee Stockton.
I have two things to rule on at the finance meeting, this Monday, they originally set it for five p.m., and they changed it to five thirty, that's how I read it, the committee members, due to, I want to make sure I get back in time for paying for this. I was a couple of minutes late, and I got some harassment from the fellow trustees pertaining to it, so I'm going to make everybody happy.
Thank you.
What's your opinion, sir?
Anyway, second item is, I would like to, out of the previous finance committee meeting, we had discussed changing the ordinance pertaining to licensing of machines in the village. As of right now, the pool tables, the golf games, cigarette machines, jukeboxes, all have a fifty dollar licensing fee done every year. The committee had discussed this, and we approved to have the ordinance changed to add the video poker machines on there, and that would be a one hundred dollar license, which would be paid by the supplier of the machines to the, to the buildings, or to the, to the users, and that would be a, a once a year, be of a hundred dollars, just like it is now, with all everything else.
So you're asking for an attorney to draw up an ordinance on that?
Well, just to revise the ordinance, it's already on the books, just add that.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Is that just for the video poker machines, for all machines?
Video poker machines, yeah. We're going to keep the prices the same for everything else, we're just going to add the video poker machines on there, since we don't, since we've got these listed on there now, and that would be, just to revise the ordinance. That's a form of the motion, sir.
Second.
Yeah, please. And you're commutating, Trustee Stockton, you indicated you had checked whether municipal or you did that information, or you have to the committee or the board, with the list of what the range of the board, what the municipalities are going to be in charge, or recall correctly, you indicated that, the, the source of your information that you had gathered is actually the person that would be taxed for this themselves.
Yeah, the provider.
And so I, I guess I have to question the reliability of asking anybody who's going to be the one that's going to be the recipient of the tax, if you will, how they feel about, or what the, the amount should be. So I was hoping before we actually vote on something like this, we'd actually do a better survey of other municipalities to see what's been falling forward. I think you indicated there's a range, in some cases, it might have been as low as fifty, might have been as much as, I think, a thousand.
There was, the, the village itself gets five percent automatically. That's, that's, that's under the, the bill that was passed in Springfield. I had contacted the supplier, and they've stated that some of the communities just be happy with their five percent. Well, the five percent could range, I mean, right now, we only have three, three establishments that are looking at machines, and they're, they won't put any more than five machines per, per establishment. So roughly, our percentage if they put the own machines, would be about twelve thousand dollars, about eleven, nine to twelve thousand dollars. So some of the, some of the municipalities are happy with that. Some of them are charging fifty dollars, some are charging a hundred, two hundred, and as I say, one of the communities is charging a thousand dollars a machine. So I can, I, I've mentioned to the, to the establishments once before, quite the good information, and call them tomorrow to get it, but I'd like to get this, start moving forward, because everything starts as of January one. We only have one meeting left in October, and one meeting in, in November and December. So, but it's up to you if you want to table it.
Well, I, 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 I'm just going back to committee meeting where you sounded like you were going to provide a sample or survey of what the other municipalities are, or that's the reason why, I'm because they're moving forward with this and stuff.
Well, I, I don't know if, if the other municipalities have the same provider, that's the only thing. I mean, I don't know if they're the provider of the Chicagoland area, if they're just a provider for the establishments that deal with their, where they get their other golf games, you know, jukeboxes and that kind of stuff. I mean, I, I'd contact them and find out what area around here, in our immediate area, uses them, excuse me, uses them, and I could, I could get something.
Maybe if we could get, you know, half dozen or a dozen of Will County or Southern Cook comparisons of what other municipalities are charging, I'd like to table, because I can make a motion to table until we get a sample of the other municipalities.
I have a question, I think this is more for the attorney, if you don't mind. If we put this ordinance through, can't we revisit it? I mean, as long as we get an ordinance on the books before January one?
You can always.
If we'd like to move, if that, if we still haven't have, Trustee Stockton, get that, those comparisons, then we can always go back, but at least we have something on the books, and we're, we're set. Is that something that's feasible?
You can amend it, you can repeal it, you can modify it, yes.
But how, how are we going to call those communities, asking them to do what they're doing or what they intend? Here, that's what I'm saying. And that's why they're going to call us, so that's the reason why we're moving forward.
Right, and I, and I understand your point of view, but I also understand Trustee Stockton's trying to just make sure that we have this on the books before January, before this takes, you know, goes into effect. So I kind, I see both views, so that's why I asked if there was a way we could, you know, if we put it on for a hundred dollars and then.
If you want to table, we can table it. Whatever you'd like to do, sir.
I, 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 I've taken a motion, we can't table it until the next meeting, if we're able to get that information possible.
Let's take a consensus amongst the trustees, whether you table this or not, because there's already been a motion set forward, and we have to withdraw that motion?
No, I just made a motion to table, that'd be a problem.
I understand, but he had a motion to go forward, so we'll draw that. We have consensus.
I, I'll withdraw it till we take a consensus to find out what's going on.
He doesn't have to withdraw it.
He's willing to do it, now, I'll.
The motion, the motion to table would trump.
That's fine.
Take less than, before the actual action taken on them.
That's fine.
Trustee Gray. If we can get a little more information from the local communities, add some more and table it, or a next, we. Bill? Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Trustee Cranzler?
That's fine.
Okay.
Make a motion, we table this until the next board meeting. Second.
Roll call.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler? Yes. Scott?
Interview.
Okay, that brings us to police, with Trustee Horn.
Yes, I would like to have a police committee meeting on, if we could have it, directly after the finance meeting on Monday the fifteenth. So it may be wishful thinking to ask for it about approximately six o'clock, but right after that, after that finance meeting. Purpose of this meeting would be to discuss this, this item that, that wound up under my committee report, about purchase of two police vehicles. So I'd like to discuss that in committee. And that would be also a good time, if the public wants to directly address the police committee about anything, including the chief.
I've got a question. Purchasing these two vehicles, there's always a line I put together when we budget it, correct? Does it have to go to committee?
Should.
It should go to committee, okay. We should do that.
We go to finance or we go to police?
It's under, it's under police right now.
Where you're spending money. Just a question.
So is it going to be the police, I think, or finance?
Well, we can give, your committee is first, we could talk about that.
I just wanted to finish, right?
I'm enjoying.
I have a police committee.
Okay.
It's, it's a police purchase.
Even if it's on my item of budget, you still have the right to get it back to that committee to discuss it. Because all the items, it's appropriate for that purchase. Can I ask one question?
Certainly.
Then, the approval of the purchase of vehicles, that's going to be not ordered on tonight, correct? That, that would be tabled. Motion to table the approval of purchase of two ve, police vehicles.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Yeah.
What?
I'm sorry. Yes, please, discussion. Is that going to cause any problems with that?
Or anything?
With that, not purchase, but with.
The time, the window of.
Yeah, opportunity with this.
Do you have a track?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Chief? Will she answer on that?
It's a TBA for that, but we're also ordering it two thousand twelve, so I don't want to answer her. I'll call five.
So this, this ultimately could, all this information that we currently have could change?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold on one second, excuse me, please.
Well, there's a discussion going on.
Yeah, there's so many discussions going on, it's very difficult to see who's on first. If he had a motion to table, let's finish that motion.
But there's a discussion regarding that motion.
Okay, so then you can go and discuss it.
I'm going to.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. If there's a time and space, pending committee approval, is it possible to actually have such that if this word has committee, then it could proceed? I mean, so that way you're already ready, my point, for your next board meeting to deal with it? So if this word, would it need any committee approval, with more candidates, basically, you would proceed with this? Because it does.
You can do that, sir. I mean, you could say motion to approve, subject to committee approval in the final terms of.
Exactly, expedite the process in the event.
That's how close it gets to committee, that's next Monday?
Yeah.
You can just say subject to the committee approval, which is going to be the on or out, to review in terms of the bonus contract.
They purchase that more efficiently.
So I think we're, or, out.
Trustee Horn, would you like to throw your.
You know, I, I just cannot see two weeks making a, a difference in purchasing this, because, I tell you, a businessman, when he sees a check for fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, he's going to, he's going to say, yeah. He's not going to say, oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's the, women of opportunity's gone. I, I just don't, I just don't see that. I, I guess I would have liked to be aware of this earlier than when I picked up my ticket, which was yesterday afternoon. I, I was pretty surprised to see that under my committee. I would have liked to have been made aware of this earlier than that. So let's, let's just, I'll, so motion to, the motion stands as is, to withdraw, to table.
All right, so you need a vote.
Roll call. Roll call.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Stockton?
No.
Motion tabled, scaries.
So we'll see you Monday the fifteenth at, on or around six o'clock.
Chief, can you find out what the window of opportunity, these are state bids, these Chief, can you find out what the window of opportunity, these are state bids, it's, these are...
Yes, I'll, I'll call.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, if we are, if we're, if I'm totally off on my speculation on that, then please let me know.
Well, there's really nothing you can do now anyway. You tabled it basically to the, to Monday. So if, if it has to be purchased by Friday for a state bid run out, because a lot of times the state bid things, they run on the fifteenth or the, or the, you know, the middle of the months and stuff, because you can go to their website and see that. And then, I mean...
Well, trustee Stockton, if I, if I have a discussion regarding that, I think what trustee Moore has indicated is if this is known about before yesterday or the day before, there's no reason why he couldn't, as a committee chair, have known about it in advance of the situation, if it was a time sensitive matter, and instead of just looking it into his items without any, any work.
I don't know. I like that it looks like, maybe, maybe that's a little harsh, I think, trustee Farquhar. Some of these things come through the door very rapidly, start these bids, you know what I'm talking about? They come there and then they go away.
I, I understand, but at least a phone call for somebody in the office, give to him and it's up as committee chair, it'll be fine.
I think he spoke for himself. You want me to back him up? I appreciate that. I lost, please, sir.
Public health, trusty Gray. Should be short and sweet. We shouldn't have any discussions on this one. October twenty-seventh, Saturday night before Halloween, we will be having our Halloween Haptics here at Pavilion from six to nine P.M. And we will be doing the hayride. Trustee Stockton is all tearing through the fire once again. And we will have a DJ again this year. And as it gets closer for our next board meeting, we will have the final P playoffs. As far as the trick or treat day itself, which is Wednesday, October thirty-first, the hours will be between three P.M. and seven P.M. From, the kids have half a day, so that should have enough time for younger kids to get out there in the daylight and then get home and do their homework. So it's from three to seven on October thirty-first, which is a Wednesday this year. Thanks, Ed. Good night.
Very good.
No, I'm not tabling anything.
Public property, trustee Farquhar.
Uh, at this point, we are, I believe, the residents who are concerned about sound issue have received whatever information they, they want. And I've talked to them individually and they're gathering questions and whatever is necessary to, ready to commit, not postpone the committee meeting. Until they were, they felt like they had whatever information they had. So at this point, I'm waiting for them to tell me they're ready.
You said a committee vote?
As soon as I give confirmation that they're ready to, to have a committee meeting, I'm, at that point, I'm leaving it to them to, to educate what they want to pursue.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'm glad to know. We got grass cars warmer on the Republican side. Yeah.
Don't go hook them either.
I think we can. I have one other one.
Okay, that brings us to, that brings us to Road and Bridge, which draws the deep up.
Just very short and sweet. Everything's done on the roads except the final coat of asphalt. There's still four or a couple spots of sidewalks and what have you. And since most of the heavy equipment is out of there, if not all of it, we're now doing our additional lane that we delayed because we didn't want to damage due to the scope of the work that was going on Route fifty. So that has started. I saw they put the, the bed in more or less for it. They'll be opening Court Street pretty soon. When they start to do the final paving, they're going to open Court Street for a while. So look for signalization, all that happening. It looks like they're going to meet their deadline and be real close to a kind of report.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Spencer, water.
Um, we've got a few items going on. We've had a couple water main breaks. Another one actually happened today. But the one I would like to speak about is we had an emergency water repair on East Gate and Herbert Court. We had to, there was water leaking into a residence home. And we had to replace three hundred and sixty feet of water line. That was a plastic tube into, we replaced it with copper water main. And we were able to do all of this work in-house, so we did not have to go out for bid or anything, and it was an emergency. So as soon as I do get those numbers in, but we will see a significant savings being able to do it in-house. I'd like to congratulate the Public Works for the great job that they did getting in there, getting the material ordered and getting it done, you know, to save the residents from a lot of damage with the water coming in. So thank you to them and that's all I have.
I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Dave Kuzel. He's our new management in the back. He jumped right on this. It's not easy to do an in-house three hundred and sixty feet water main, where there was never a water main once before. It was a plastic line. Good job, Dave. I appreciate that. Economic development, I don't have nothing to add except KFC, fried chicken, over there is some tacos too. They're doing well. It's, they had a soft opening, they had a grand opening, I believe, within another week or, week and a half or so. I want to walk the other community. It's, it's an asset to us. Moves on to unfinished business. Do we have any out there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, I had a question due to the fact that several months ago, I believe it was, it had been brought up a couple of times and it's been sent to committee, never made it to committee about the issue of trustee packets being made available to the public. I had requested for it to go to a vote at the last meeting and it was requested to be postponed until this meeting. I'm fine with that. I don't see it on the agenda anymore. And I, I don't know if it's even required to be an agenda item specifically for an implementation of this. It's more of a, just a consensus, I guess, if you will.
I think if you're going to do something, you should take a motion to that.
That's why it should probably be on it. Well, then, if I may, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that trustee packets, in your entirety, with the exception of items that are...
First, I got to ask, and I'm not cutting you off, I'm sorry. Council, can we take the action without it being on this particular agenda?
It's probably best that it be on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Can I, can I go ahead and stipulate what I expect to be?
You can make a, you can indicate that what you like to, yes, you can. We find a action on something on the business.
Reaffirmation of that meeting or whatever you want to develop, what I would like to see is the public access to the entirety of the trustee packets, with the exception of any items that are by law excluded because of the executive session type that you're... So contracts that are pending negotiation, things of that sort would be excluded. But drafts, the ordinances, the pending warrant lists, things like that should be acceptable to the public. And I, personally, I think it's not a big deal if you're mentioning trustee packets, at least have one extra copy at the window so people want to come look at it. But ideally, because the public does always have an opportunity to come in during business hours. We have actually stepped up, and I appreciate, in fact, the agenda in minutes tomorrow on the website. I would like to actually see trustee packet, even though it can sit right on your draft, any warrant approval, watermark under, that's fine. But I'd like to see that as, that's my request.
Anybody else have some discussion of this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something on that. Trustee Farquhar, they are available for them to look at, at the village. We do make an extra packet. And just so you're aware, I was actually on the phone today with the attorney general's office about this. And we can talk about it later. She's in agreeance with me on things that have not been approved by the board should not be in public. And I, I'll talk to you after the meeting. Okay?
I mean, there may be, there may be something I'm not aware of, that, maybe warrant lists, things like that. Whether it's, and if there's things that are of a sensitive nature like that, especially if we're voting on some. I mean, I expect the public, I don't know how they can even adequately survive the governance of the electrical irrigation and things like that. We're, I know they're trusting us, but it'd be nice for them to be a little more assured or careful. And, and, and I'm just saying as an example, for them to be able to review what's in it so they understand that we're not passing something that they're going to regret, things of that sort, and, you know, just some of that ability for them to be able to look at it. That's all.
I will assure you we'll do what's said or legal.
Okay. To the fullest extent, I hope.
That's incorrect.
Thank you, that's correct.
This brings us to new business. Okay. Moving on to open the public, not agenda items, three minutes. Your name, your address, complete the police.
Jesse Reyes, forty-seven thirty-one. I feel like if I didn't bring this up, because I see all the good work that, I mean, discussions in the village board meeting and things like that and all the points trustee Farquhar brings up and, and things like that, so I, you know, I'm, but I'm not trying to imply anything about anybody. I'm just going on ethics, basically. There was some discussion at village board meeting about WPL, the governance of WPL, the public TV station. I used to volunteer for them, and it is a very hard thing to do. Takes a lot of your time out. Really, really does. And, you know, I, I know we have a trustee Moore's sons volunteering, and I know for a young child, young kid, it probably bothers him too. And God bless him for making that commitment. It is a big, very big commitment. But I, we see the phone call from Mike Margraf a couple, two, three weeks ago and, and, you know, I mean, like I said, I'm not here to say anything about anybody. I just think on ethics in itself, I found out, I, I, Mike Margraf told me that trustee Farquhar pretty much downloads the village board meetings onto our, you know, WPL TV station. And, you know, I'm not saying anything about anybody, but I, I just think as far as ethics goes, it, ethics goes, it doesn't really fit in good. You know, because I know the question came up before when I was volunteering, editing and all this other stuff, and I'm not a computer person. All I did was take the DVD to the station, put it in the thing and press a button, and then Mike Margraf took care of everything. I told him, Mike, why isn't, is, why isn't that happening that way now? And he seemed to make it sound like it's a bit complicated, thinned it enough, that they have a new camera and things like that. Again, I'm, you know, Jay, you're doing a great job as a trustee. I really believe that. And I, I see a lot of, you know, over discussion here tonight, and I hear a lot of positive things at the village board meetings on watch my TV. I'm just saying as far as ethics goes, that we, I think it's important, I think it's very important, very, very important, that we should keep our public TV station exactly what it is, a public TV station. I understand the governance part of this town or any other town wanting to be involved with public TV, which is good. But I, I just think it's very important that the people that are directly associated with what's put and put on TV for the public channel, for us, I don't think public officials should be involved in that. I have no problem with them sitting on a board to govern how things are set, but I just don't think it's right. And that's only my opinion. I'm only going on ethics. I'm not up here to say anything about anybody's credibility or honesty or anything else. Just my opinion. I, I do wish that, I understand WPL has a very hard time getting volunteers in this town. And to be very honest with you, I, it took about five minutes, five months for me to commit to volunteering. So I understand all the issues and stuff like that.
Mr. Reyes, so I can comment. I appreciate the time that you did put back there trying to get this permission out to the people.
No, it didn't seem that way.
Well, cliche. Myself and Mr. Wallace were just discussing parts of this issue today in regards to looking at putting an actual camera system in by somebody other municipalities are and running it.
It is in the Comcast contract. That Comcast will, under their contract, when I read it on the other one, that they will, will hook up Moni with Peatones so that it can be live, just like Peatones is. They just need somebody to pull the switch.
Right.
I don't know why that's ever done.
I'm talking about the municipality spending their money to put a camera system in much better than what's on the tripod, whereas...
Does this, does, this, not to cut you off, but this camera, is this village board meeting being filmed right now? It's being filmed and audio? Because I know we had trouble before with our cameras, and I believe, and don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure about this. Mike Margraf called the town, president of WPL, called the town and asked if we could get a copy of the village meetings that were, because of their camera problems, and he was told they were only audios, but I'm just asking. I don't know. It's not, you know.
No, he's never called or asked for a copy.
Oh, that's why I say, don't quote me, because I can't speak for the other man.
And we, that does not have audio. What they're truly here for is security in a fashion sometimes of political...
So nobody can hear what was in right now on that camera?
No. What happens is sometimes you get kids in here from the Boy Scouts and this and that, and some things get damaged, just like there's a camera at this front door and a back door. But we're talking about an actual camera system with the audio, which is better grade than what we have. That way, at a board meeting or committee meetings, we just take that disc out or we, I'm not a computer guy, but Mr. Wallace could tell you, we shoot it right across from it. That way, there doesn't have to be a young man back there, she'd be out chasing girls right now.
Who, who can say approval would swallow the horse?
Uh, so who? But we're working on it, because I do believe the more the people know, the better.
It's all about transparency.
Right.
Like you said yourself at one time. Once you see it on camera, it's gold.
That's right.
You can track that.
That's right.
Do you want to say something, trustee Farquhar?
If, okay. I'm sure that can. Uh, just to clarify, Jesse, I'm Mr. Reyes.
Oh, Jesse's good.
I might have a tie on, Jesse.
Cousin Jesse.
There you go.
Anyhow, pertaining to the, my involvement is no different than, in, in some regards, than what Beecher does currently, which is what the mayor is indicating that he'd like to go towards, and I think we'd all be happy about not having to worry about having to, you know, rely on volunteers. They have a camera set up back there, either by remote, you flip it on, whatever the case may be. There's been times where the camera is, just because it's been shaky on a tripod or wherever else, you get a permanent mount, you can control it a lot better. See, what I have done is to facilitate the issue where trustee Moore has been involved, is that he doesn't have time. I don't have time. Nobody else here really has time to, 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 to take the chip out of the camera, bring it all the way down to the P S O. That sounds like a massive trip, you know, but it, it's a time constraint. You know, you're leaving here and you got to go right to work the next morning, and time issue and all that. So what we have done is we've facilitated, because of my technical abilities, to create a FTP server where trustee Moore actually uploads from the camera directly to that server and WPL download the work to their broadcast. There's no editing. There's no anything else going on. It's just a clarify. And it's no different than what the mayor's indicating he'd like to go towards. And frankly, I wouldn't want to see our staff have to drive the P S O. I mean, we can upload it directly to their server. You know, P S O's, or Beechers are already doing the same thing, where they actually burn a disc of the meeting and they drop it off at WPL. And I think whenever they have their East County or mayor's meeting or something like that, they, they exchange...
I think the next day they send it to the Department.
So we send it over there or whatever. But the point is, is you get government officials involved there, you get government officials involved here. We're stepping up because we don't have other people willing to volunteer to do that stuff. And so we're doing what we can because, you know, someone's pulling more in, in, in the process than others. You know, the mayor's facilitating it. I'm facilitating it. You know, it's, it's just because the people requested it and we're trying to make sure that happens. So it pertains to my involvement in that, just trying to help the people get what they said that they wanted.
I understand that, and that's why I said I'm not here to question anybody. I was just...
But you started, you started indicating it was an issue.
No, 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 no. No, I wasn't indicating anything. I basically said that I didn't, not here to question anybody's honesty or anything else. I just said on ethics alone.
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to understand where the...
But, you know, at the same time, whatever Beecher does is fine.
I think what Mr. Reyes is saying...
It's okay if Beecher's not okay.
I think what he's saying is to illuminate the perception.
Perception, correct, because what the, my phone call, the phone call I received from Mike Margraf is that, that meeting last month on the twelfth with the, I think it was golf pitch issue, there were twenty-seven minutes missing on the, on the recorder. And I told it, uh, he called me and asked me if I was at the meeting, and I said, no. I said, well, why don't you just look at the chip? He said, well, I don't have it. I said, well, who has it? He indicated you had it.
Right, sure, trustee.
And I said, well, why does he have it? He said, well, he does all that stuff. I said, well, I was shocked. But at the same, at the same time, another reason I didn't mention this tonight is because I had videoed the finance committee meeting, and then, and then you picked up the camera last night, and then Mike Margraf calls me today and I couldn't take his call and he's all up in the air about where's the camera, we got to have it for tonight. And apparently Doug Horn called and he was looking for the camera. So I, I told Mike, you don't even know what's going on? I mean, you have no control over what's happening in this town as far as WPL goes? He said, well, I just don't know what to do. Well, if you don't know what to do, you don't know what to do. But it seems like, like was mentioned earlier, one hand don't know what the other hand is doing. And, you know, as, it's a public TV station. There's, volunteering is fantastic, trustee Farquhar. I, like I said when I started talking, you're doing a lot of good things for this town. But I'm just saying on ethics alone. I'm not here to argue with you about it.
The perception of ethics.
Right. No, no, not perception of ethics. The fact that ethically it isn't correct for a public, elected public official to be involved with a public TV station where there was so much tension in this town over transparency, over who's doing what and how they doing it. And I was actually, if, if you want to be very honest with you, I volunteered for over two and a half years and I sat here and had you sit there and say that you don't know if people are editing the tapes, meaning that had a... Right. I mean, so I, I didn't, I didn't get offended. And I don't come to these village board meetings to offend anybody.
No, I...
I just come here to say what I think, and trustee Spencer can smile because I know she's probably angry that maybe if I look like me, it... But I don't even want to go any further with this. I made my comments, that's it. I, I want to...
If I thought your cousin did. If anybody feels that my involvement is questionable, I'll be glad to stop. If anybody feels that my involvement is questionable, I'll be glad to stop. But that means it won't be facilitated, and you're all going to see WPL's broadcast without somebody else entering and...
I, I would like to volunteer again, that. That's all. Because if that's what it takes, I mean, I understand you, you jumped up to the plate...
I don't know, but the governance is going to be set down.
And that's not a...
Well, once the governance is set down, then we can discuss it. But if that's what it takes, I mean, you know, trustee Parkar, I understand the voluntary stuff, but let's not make it sound like you're the only one. That's what Mike Margraff told me.
No, because...
He told me you're the only one who knows how to download it. That's what he told me. You set it up, and only you can do it.
Actually, I'm the one who downloads it because it's at, it's at my house, because...
He told me that to my face, he's the only one who can do it.
My, my son, my son does the videotaping, and the only reason he's doing it...
Trusty Parkar get the chip and the camera. If you're doing all that work, why are you involved if he's downloading it? I mean, what did you ask?
I think Jesse's, or it's in Mike's mind, was to drive it off my...
No, I'm just asking you that, that you just said that you programmed it so you can download it real quick, if you stepped to the plate, but now trustee Horn's saying that he downloaded it. Perfect. I mean, just, you know, it's us. I mean, well, that's Johan.
No, I'm just saying, I mean...
No, no, that's okay. I'm just, I have two stories.
That's actually pretty good. What does that trusty...
Mr. Reyes, what I said earlier, we're going to be looking for a system where there's nobody that touches it, per se. If we can get that run, we can shoot it across.
I should let you have told us, it goes over line. There you go. Great.
And just to clarify, surveillance cameras do not have the same output grade necessary to go...
Oh, I know that. I know that. So, I know that.
So what?
You're a smart guy.
I'm sure trustee Horn, his son...
I wish you would act smarter in your village, in your committee meeting, you saw that.
Are you nice?
I got it all.
Really?
Yes.
I'm just, we're all just trying to help.
Anybody else in the public? Would like to come up? Poor things is standing there.
Hi. I'm Kay Mueller, four-nine-three-two La Quinta, I'm from Gulf Vista. I've been here before, and I was here, oh, probably a couple months ago, asking about using Farmers Park for our family picnic, with probably fifty, sixty people. And I think the last time I heard you were going into executive committee, and I haven't been able to get back since then.
Using the park? Well, you have every right to use it.
Yes. There was no ordinance, though, to cover that.
Oh, it was a...
I was at the last committee, at my last finance committee, we did, we were supposed to make some discussion. Everybody hadn't fully looked at all the information. There's going to be an agenda for Monday nights. So hopefully, that's another thing I want to get moving by the time the next, when picnic season starts next year, so we can have that on file, too. So we are going to be discussing that again this Monday at the committee meeting.
Okay, good.
Hopefully, we'll have something.
And any news on when the kitchen might be finished?
Not yet. I'm trying to get a carpenter in here right now, but they're so hard to find, there's been a stirring around with little things. If I get somebody in here, we might be able to get it done by the end of the year.
Okay, so it'll be ready for springtime?
I hope so. I would do.
Okay. Thank you.
If you really like to, you can leave your phone number, trustee Stockton. We said you can call her and let her know, so you don't have to come the next board meeting. I think you should be extending that courtesy.
Well, hopefully, if everything goes okay, as I say, if everything goes okay, we'll, we'll be on the next agenda for at least the, the village attorney to draw up the changes on the, with the ordinance.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Did somebody say they needed a carpenter?
I missed the point.
Good one. Ooh, shakalaka, how you doing?
I just happen to have a business card with me, if anyone needs it. Greg Larson, Larson Contract, eighteen sixty-fifty industrial drive. I'll be very brief. I was just kind of inquiring as to the status of the TIF reimbursement. I don't know if that was part of the earlier discussion for our property.
Counsel, order.
We did receive, sir, it would be on the next agenda. We usually get five or six of them at a time if they're passing all in sequence, but there should be no issue about it. Mr. Peel, it's been all proper documentation. The tax bill is paid, so, well, we are a little early on it, but we're good here.
Okay. Thank you.
In your agreement, Mr. Larson, or in the agreement, December is, is the, the time that's outlined in there, and as the attorney indicated, we just are going through the validation process. It's a little early for that, but we can, we can accommodate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?